Or like whatever we're looking at. I know it's gone on my computer, that's a separate issue. Yeah, for like four years. It just don't work.
Remember to turn your microphones on.
Okay, you ready to open the meeting? Uh, okay, it's seven o'clock, uh, seven oh two. And I'd like to open the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, Warsaw contention planning commission meeting. First thing is, uh, the roll call, roll call. I'm Craig Koloji. Uh, Chris Nagy.
Yeah.
Jennifer Peters.
Here.
Thomas Bartek.
Here.
Veronica Gress.
Here.
Sharav Koshik.
Here.
Alexandra Janic.
Yeah.
Okay, we're all here. Uh, we can all stand for the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is public comment. Only one public, any, any comments?
I'm, I'm here for the.
Okay, perfect. Right, uh, okay, at this point, uh, we're at the reorganization section of the meeting, I'm gonna turn it over to the solicitor. To, uh, take care of that.
So, uh, you may or may not recall, and if you haven't done this before, we reorganize every year. And when you reorganize, you, the, it's a little, it's a process that some people aren't necessarily used to all the time. So there is the process where you nominate first. And there's nominations for a position. And we can have more than one nomination if you like. Then you close the nominations, then you vote on that position. And then we go, and we do that for the chair, the vice chair and secretary. So by example, if I nominated Molly, Molly's not on the commission, but I'm picking on her because she can't be the. Uh, and if nobody else nominates Molly, then we close the nominations. Then we have a separate vote on who actually is the chair. So it's, it's weird, or if you're not used to it, it's somewhat uncommon. So our first position is the election of the chair. Does anyone, would, would anybody like to make a nomination? And if you want, uh, our prior chair was Craig. And if somebody wants to nominate the, uh, Craig as being the chair, you could do that. Somebody wants to nominate somebody else, you could do that. But somebody has to make a nomination, it can't be me. It's gotta be one of you guys.
I nominate Craig. Mr. Koloji.
Jennifer.
I'd like to nominate him as well.
Very well, are there any other nominations? So now we close the nomination process. Uh, and theoretically, we're supposed to vote, so all those who, uh, vote for Craig to be nominated as chair, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone who's against, say nay. Now we have the vote for chair. And we'll, you know, we'll take a vote as to who, uh, for Craig to be the chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And we can note for the record, they were unanimous votes for both. Now we go to the vice chair, this is really exciting, by the way. Uh, and we could determine who would like to be vice chair. Our existing vice chair is Chris Nagy, but anybody can nominate anyone. So would somebody like to make a nomination?
I'll nominate Chris Nagy for vice chair.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there, uh, now for, is there any other nominations? Or are there any other nominations? So if we could vote on Chris being vice, uh, the nomination for Chris being vice chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? And again, unanimous. Now we get to the vote of vice chair. All those in favor of Craig being, Craig Nagy being vice chair?
Aye.
All those against? And again, unanimous. Then we, election of secretary, and I believe it's Jennifer, who's the secretary right now. So if somebody wants to make a nomination for secretary.
I nominate Jennifer.
I'll second that.
Any further nominations? All those in favor of Jennifer being nominated?
Aye.
All those against? Again, it's unanimous. And then the vote for secretary, all those in favor of Jennifer Peters being secretary?
Aye.
All those against? So they're all unanimous votes. The next thing we do, and we leave this to Molly, is to pick our times and dates. And, do you wanna do that, you want me to do that?
Uh, you can do that, I just wanna point out that normally for Thursday and, um, November, December due to holidays, we bump it back to the third, Thursdays. That's good, then make, make the motion to accept the meeting dates and times.
Still fine. Yep, yeah.
I move to continue the schedule as we had it last year.
I'll second it. And then all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And all those against? Alright, now I'll hand the meeting back over to our chair, and, um, we'll go from there.
Great, thanks Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, the first business item is the Martin Minor subdivision.
Do you have a seat up there? Yep, wherever you're comfortable. And once you get situated, please make sure the mic is on and. It should just, it, it should just be a green light on it, just press the, if it's red, just press it.
Okay.
You just wanna introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Monica Sweeney, I'm with, uh, Barry A. Siton Associates. Um, here about the, uh, Martin Minor subdivision. Um, I, no, it's been a while since this plan has been, uh, uh, probably in front of you guys, so I'll just do a quick introduction. Um, so right now, it's a, about a seven and a half acre, uh, single lot, and the owner would like to, uh, subdivide that into three total lots. Uh, with the possibility of developing, uh, the two, um, extra lots into, uh, residential properties. Uh, we have, um, addressed the last review letter, which I believe was from somewhere around twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Um, and, uh, we received, uh, some comments. I guess, how would you like, uh, how would you like to go through this?
Well, do you have, are, are there anything in particular you wanna talk about, or, uh, you know, things that, that aren't will complies?
Um, excuse me, I, uh, let's see, it, it is mostly will comply. Um, I do have, I guess, a couple of questions for, um, you, the township engineer on some of the responses. Let's see, um, so I will move down to, uh, number ten, letter C. So this, uh, mentions that, um, it appears to be an easement will be required for the proposed sanitary sewer line extension across the Lieberman property between proposed lots one and three. The proposed easement ownership, maintenance responsibilities and restrictions, uh, shall be clearly identified. Um, I believe there was a note added to the plan for this, was there something else in particular you wanted to see?
Sorry, I'm Andrew Yusef from Hanover Engineering, despite what the sign says. I believe that, that, that's just a general comment that we keep on our plans, or on, uh, in our comment letter.
Okay.
Uh, in order to make sure that the easement is then, uh, dealt with later on. But, no, the, the note is, is adequate.
It, okay, I just wanted to make sure we had everything covered, so. Alright, um, so. Uh, number seventeen. Uh, so that refers to any proposed deed restrictions or covenants affecting the subdivision, uh, shall be provided for review by the township. Um, so we didn't note any, uh, deed restrictions or covenants, uh, were there any that we may have missed that we, we weren't aware of, or is this just another, like, standard comment that just kinda?
Yeah, that's a standard comment.
Uh, number eighteen, um, talks about street addresses for the proposed lots two and three. Um, this should, says they shall be identified on the plan. Um, is there somebody that we should contact at the township to find out what those are? So that we can get them on the plan?
Uh, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question on that?
Uh, so it mentions the street addresses for the proposed lots two and three, um, says they should be identified on the plan. Um, they'll be assigned by the township, is there anybody that in particular we should contact to get that information? So that we can get them on the plan?
Steve, I don't know if you're aware of.
I'm embarrassed to say I'm not sure who, how, how it's done, or who they're contacting, so what I.
Normally that would be the zoning officer, so we can give that, have Tyler check that out, and he may need to contact you or Brian if there's questions on, I'll have a number, but normally it is the zoning officer.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna move down to, excuse me, twenty-three, uh, C. Um, so this says, the proposed planting screen easements along lots two and three close within acceptable limits, but the areas specified on sheet two for these easements do not appear to be correct. Uh, we'll, we'll fix that. Uh, my question is on the second part, it says additionally, the basins on lots two and three appear to conflict with required plantings in these easements. Um, so, the, so the basins are basically where the easements are. I guess, this, this proper screening plantings don't really work well within those basins. Sh, can we move the plantings to perhaps behind the basin, or are we, do we need to move the basin, I mean, the?
The, um, the plant screening has to be within the twenty-foot, um, buffer screen that's required. Um, I'm not sure if you have a, oh, there's the plan up there. A proposed grading plan, maybe?
Yes, we need to go over a few sheets.
Um, and maybe two sheets, uh, past this one? Yep.
I don't know, sorry, the, the one that you were just on? This one, yeah, thank you.
So, um, so obviously the pla, the ten-foot planting screen has to be within the twenty-foot buffer, that's, that's required past the front yard setback. Potentially, a, a basin modification, or if you wanna explore, um, requesting a waiver for that, um, up to you. But, the, that's the requirement for the ordinance.
Okay, would it be, um, do you, would a waiver for that be? Uh, would that be agreeable, I guess? If, if we requested a waiver for that?
I'm, I'm not one to answer to that.
So on, on comment twenty-three, it, it says, uh, at the, at the first paragraph, and this is part of comment twenty-three, it says the applicant requests a waiver from only providing the required berm. So apparently haven't requested for the, for the other aspect, so. Um, I, I guess, we're talking about this, this area here?
Uh, so, yeah, uh, further over, so where the two basins are, sort of in the corner there?
Over here.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the, the plant, the, the screening easement goes basically right through those basins. And the plantings, uh, I mean, would be, be in the bottom of the basin, which would not, uh, really provide much screening. That's if they were even water tolerant plantings. Can the basins be in a different location? Um.
That's a driveway for that, right?
Yes, that, there's a driveway in between the two, um, I mean, it's. It could, I, so the problem is that both the basins are at the low point of the lots, so that's the best location to collect the, um, the stormwater runoff in. So mo, moving them means, um, either collecting less stormwater runoff, or, um.
So your proposal is to move the, the planting in those basins? Or to forego the planting?
Or for, or forego the planting. I guess we'd like to know if, uh, you know, if, if asking for a waiver for the, the plantings, um, where the basins are, is, would, would be a problem.
Where would you propose to move the plantings to?
Um, I mean, we could move them to the other side of the basins, um, if, if that would be preferred.
What are the plantings?
Uh, very sh, very shrubs and, and, uh, small trees.
And what, what is being screened? Like, what, what's?
Um, it's, it seems to be a, a, a screening for the road from the residential development fr, from the dwellings.
And right now, it's just open space, right?
Correct.
I could read plans, so let me just give, this first time I'm seeing this. So this is a triangle-shaped lot, correct?
Correct.
And, and this, this was presented to the committee before you. Right. Came on, so this is a. So I'm trying, I'm trying to grasp this, and it's one ba, it's one open lot right now.
Yes.
None of these basins are here, and this is a design for the basins for the three properties.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and those two basins at the lower right, the driveway goes through those two basins to get to that lot number two.
Correct.
And then where are the proposed driveways to get to lot one and three?
Uh, so lot one is existing, uh, and that driveway is right along the, um, so the open property in the middle, it's, it's just to the, the left of that.
Okay.
Um, and then on, uh, for lot three, the other driveway is just to the left of the other basin that's on that property.
And those are the existing driveways, you're not changing any of them?
The, yes, the existing driveway is, is not being changed.
This is lot one, though? Yeah. How do I get in lot one? Right here, the driveway's right here. Oh, that's.
How deep are these basins?
Um, I believe they're maybe about three feet. So the, um.
The, it's just, that's a driveway because of water.
Yeah, so there, I mean.
Yeah.
There's potential for them to be different, um, the idea is that whoever comes in to develop e, each of the lots will then do their own uh, design for the house that's to be built. Um, and then they'll, they'll have to come back and get that approved in, in a plot plan for each lot.
Whatever members you're, which house are you developing for sale, which property are you developing for sale?
Uh, lots, lots two and three.
Okay. And lot one is the, it's existing.
That, that, yes, that's the existing original lot, and they're, they're gonna keep that.
They're gonna keep that one. I thought, so the woman who owns the property originally was going to develop the lot in the back for herself.
Um, I, as far as I know, they're planning to sell both lots two and three.
That may have changed, or I may be, I'm, I'm old, so I'm losing my memory.
I, I'm new to the project myself, so, um, I, I don't have all of the history on it.
So, lot, lot one is like over two acres, correct?
Yes.
Lot two is three acres, I'm, if I'm seeing that right? Is that correct?
That looks like, yes, that looks to be correct.
And lot three is under two acres?
Correct.
Isn't it required for two acres or more to build in Sock, Lower Sock and Township? That's my thinking, two acres or more, no, no less than two acres, correct? We have the, I mean, developments don't have the two acres. Well, is this, wait a minute, is this septic system, or this is public?
Um, it's going to be public, so there's, there's gonna be sanitary sewer line installed with, with the project.
You're talking if they needed to have their own septic. If they need their own septic, it can be less than two acres. Correct, okay, it's public, gotcha.
What, what are the specific requirements for that planting screen?
Um, I, I'd, as far as plant content, or?
Height and, is there so, is that?
Uh, I'm not sure if there necessarily were, were requirements for, for heights, um.
Specific trees?
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't, don't recall, um, I, I just know that there was a, um, a ten-foot area within, um, a, adjacent to the front yard setback that it had to be located.
Does the, um, planting requirement have any purpose beyond, um, screening? In other words, does it, does it have a role in stormwater management? Are, are these plants also plants that absorb stormwater, or are they purely for, um, for screening?
I mean, technically, they will absorb stormwater, but they were not taken into account in the stormwater management calculations.
So it's purely aesthetic?
I mean, based on the arrangement of the lots here, I don't, I don't see a problem with, with not providing that screen, particularly on that basin on the right-hand side. Right. Yeah. If I live across the street, man, I, I, I don't think there's much of anything except a few trees, uh, s, single dead trees or something up there right there now. Yeah. There's really nothing. What's the depth of the basins?
Um, I believe it's around three feet. Um, a, again, it's going to depend on the, um, the design of the, um, the future properties. Uh, we did, I guess, say hypothetical, you know, this could be designed, so, um, whoever comes in to design each lot and does a plot plan is going to potentially change the, the set, the depth.
And then the basin on the left is gonna feed, overfill to the basin that goes right, is that how the design would be?
Um, they should be disconnected. I, I, I believe they, they wouldn't connect the, the ponds, I'd.
They don't connect?
I, I don't think so. I, I think they discharge to the, the roadside soil, I'd have to take another look, though.
Okay. Alright, so in addition to, to requesting a waiver from the berm you're asked, you're also requesting a waiver from certain aspects of the planting requirements?
Yes.
Now, planting is shown currently on here, and you can, you can do what's shown on the plan, right?
Yes.
That, you know, that's your intent, okay. Okay, any, any other items? Discuss?
Um, yes, so I'm moving on to the stormwater ma, management ordinance section.
Okay.
Um. Alright, so, um, I guess, I'm a little bit confused about the first paragraph of that section, um, it kind of, and, and I'll read it, um, so the response letter states, the planning commission recommended a deferral of the stormwater management design until submission of the plot plans. The plans show a proof of drainage concept, but final design will depend on the actual proposed features on lots two and three. Applicant has requested a deferral from constructing slash securing the proposed improvements until the proposed lots are developed. However, the applicant has not requested, and the planning commission has not recommended a deferral of the stormwater management design requirements. So, I guess what I'm wondering is, the, the first part says that it was, that a deferral was recommended, but then that it, it wasn't?
So, well, go ahead. Yep. Sorry, one second.
No, that's okay.
While he's looking, I believe the distinction is there's two separate deferrals that would be asked, one is the actual development. Um, and then the second one would be the design itself. So I think the Hanover engineer letter is, uh, identifying that there was only one deferral request asked for. And if you're going to ask for a deferral of the design itself, that, that should have been done, or still can be done, it's an outstanding obligation.
Okay. Alright.
I'm not the engineer, but that's how I read it.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, the concept is here that they've shown boxes of a footprint, but that's not going to be the footprint of, of the, of the house that's built. So rather than going through the exercises, spending all the money to design something for something that's not going to happen, they've demonstrated a general feasibility that they could do it under a scenario, but they'll come back in later when a, when a, uh, house design is, is ready.
Okay.
And then, what, the other thing they're asking for is not, a deferral to not have to secure, not at the post, uh, security, financial security, to build something that they're not going to build anyway.
Okay.
That's the second part of that, right? Uh, that's why I read that.
So there is additional comments, obviously, under that, that are due to, uh, determining feasibility of your stormwater design.
Right, okay, so.
Including the carbonate geology report.
Right, so, I didn't, um, about the carbonate geology report, we do have that, I didn't realize we had it at the time, um, again, I'm new to the project, so I can forward that to you. Um, so, back to real quick, the, the deferral, um. So. Because we didn't ask for the deferral of stormwater management design requirements, the items underneath section one are then required, including infiltration testing, is that what?
Correct.
Okay, so if we asked for that deferral, then would that be, um, would that be agreeable, and then we wouldn't be required to produce the, the infiltration testing?
Um, I ca, I can't speak for council, or.
Sorry.
The planning commission, obviously, but, um, I will say that I, I, I have noticed that, just based off of contours, that it, there appears to be a closed depression on the north uh, side of the property, uh, I believe that's lot three. I don't necessarily know if it will affect the stormwater design, or if there's other carbonate features in the area. But it may be something to, to look for.
Okay.
So as a matter of practice, generally, if there's a deferral or waiver request, it's normally done in advance of the meeting in writing. I understand you were looking for clarification, and we, we all understand what you're doing, and.
Yes.
No one's faulting you for it.
Yes.
But then it, well, it places the commission, uh, the planning commission in a difficult position where they hear of a request for a waiver or deferral for the first time here. But if the idea is to get some clarity, and to come back with a, with a more definitive set of requests, certainly that makes sense.
Yes.
I just don't want you to walk out of here thinking, you know, with the response that you're gonna get today if they were hearing it for the first time.
No, no, I'm, I'm hoping to get some, some clarity, and to find out if, um, you know, what we are, um, requesting would, um, you know, be agreeable.
Yeah, so it sounds like, based on what we just heard, it sounds like maybe there's some more information that needs to be provided to give us a certain level of confidence that it will work before we would consider any kind of waiver.
Okay.
Is there an approximate square footage of the house? Do you know?
Uh, um, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, I apologize. Um, actually, it might, it's possible it says it on the plan right there, I can't tell, it was in, within the building footprint?
Location feature house. I mean, in theory, they could build to the maximum allowable previous coverage, yeah.
Those lot sizes, I think it's printed on there, I'm just having trouble reading it. Each of those are how big?
I'm sorry, what was the?
The lot sizes, what are those?
The acreage of each lot.
Yes, the acreage of each.
There's, uh, the lot one was like two point eight something. Lot two is three point something. And lot three is, looks like one point seven?
I have a, I have a question, unless you're in the process of answering another question.
Uh, no, go ahead.
Okay, um, there's a couple of waivers requested on page seven, um, having to do with infiltration when the ground frozen. Uh, requesting that the minimum storm sewer pipe, um, be, I guess, less than fifteen inches. Um, could you just talk about, you know, what you have in mind, and why those are, those waivers are necessary? And we'll come to, um, page seven of the letter, um, items. If you look down to um, page seven of the letter, um, items three, uh, five, and then six.
Um, all right, so three is discussing the um, uh, infiltrating water when the ground surface is frozen, um. I mean, and I I can't say that I've ever heard of a requirement to infiltrate water when the ground is frozen because the water won't really infiltrate when the ground is frozen, so.
Never heard of that either.
Um, so at least.
I could speak to that, um, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, so the stormwater management ordinance in the past had that um, as a requirement. So the start of this project was done during that original stormwater management ordinance with that requirement, and it was typically waived. Uh, the newest ordinance, um, excluded that requirement. However, since this development was submitted uh, prior and and continually extended, it it's subject to the original stormwater management requirements.
Okay, so that's not really an issue?
No.
Okay.
Good enough, because it makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, I was wondering what what you're supposed to do about crossing the ground.
It, I, yeah, I I can't say I've come across that requirement before. Um. Uh, so the next one, number five, had to do with the minimum uh, storm sewer pipe, uh, of fifteen inches, um. I believe we were proposing a, was it a twelve inch pipe for underneath the driveways? Um, so I think that's why the uh, the waiver was requested for that. Uh, and then number six. Okay, we're just requesting, um, i- instead of using, um, concrete end walls, uh, and we're proposing to use flared end sections, um, the the concrete end walls just tend to have a higher uh, reveal, whereas the the flared end sections allow for like a l- a lower profile, um.
It's a cost issue, too, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah. So the fifteen inch pipe size, like, Pendot, that that's their minimum, minimum pipe size, is that?
Um, I would say typically fifteen inches is as a minimum is used in roadways. And, um, however, the the drainage area to this particular pipe that's in question, the twelve inch pipe, is relatively minor, as well as uh, stormwater calculations were provided to show that the twelve inch uh, pipe can adequately convey uh, what's necessary per the ordinance. One thing I will point out, though, with the flared end section, typically, um, we would like to see like a a trash rack or something on the uphill side of it in order to prevent clogging, uh, especially since the pipe size is going to twelve inches, it may be a little more prone to clogging than than a larger pipe, so.
Okay, we can add that.
Are these pipes in the right of way, or are they outside the right of way?
Molly, can you do me a favor and and zoom in on the plan, um, to the bottom where that, um, the proposed houses? Um, f- further down, please. And then to the right. No, that's perfect. If you can zoom down a little bit more, your uh, your mouse is almost near where that pipe is. So to that, uh, to, let's call it plan north, I believe that north scale is also plan north. But um, that that lower uh, right hand corner basin.
Oh, right here.
Uh.
Right, it's right up here.
The top left corner of it, yes. So that's receiving a a a small amount of drainage area from from lot three and diverting it into that basin.
So it's outside the right of way, it's gonna be the homeowner's responsibility for maintenance, so it might not be as big a concern for us.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and I think I, the last, um, last item I had a question about was, uh, so we're still in the stormwater, uh, section number ten. And it just says the owner shall sign the uh, owner B B M P O N M notes on sheets eleven and thirteen. So we had added a note basically stating that the owners of the future lots would sign. Um, those notes, it doesn't make sense for the um, owner of lot one to sign that when they're not actually gonna own the the basins in the future, once the lots are developed.
Um, I'm I'm unsure how that's typically handled in regards to um, this particular circumstance, since um, obviously, the the lots will be retained by the current owner, but the development won't happen until these lots are sold off. Um, I can, I can get back to you on that particular um, requirement.
Okay. Yeah, we we added a note thirteen on uh, the site plan that basically states that, so.
Okay.
Couldn't that become a condition?
Uh. Yeah, I believe, I believe so, yeah. But um, yeah, we can, we can have that discussion, um, and and then if it's decided that that those are not applicable, then we can have them removed from the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's probably less of a concern, given that they're gonna be designing a stormwater system for the, for the new house when that comes in.
Okay, um, everything else is welcome back.
Uh, one thing I do wanna point out, too, if if you don't mind getting together an updated waiver request letter, it appears, based off of your last submission, there there are some additional waivers that weren't requested.
And tonight we'll have some, too.
Okay, cool.
And while you're reviewing your, or putting together your waiver request or defer request letter, if you're looking at A three, they reference to completing improvements, uh, and deferring certain aspects of of security and so on. From the attorney's standpoint, it would be my recommendation for the planning commission to not authorize a deferral for any public improvements. Uh, if they're private improvements, it's something that they, you know, the planning commission might wanna consider. So you might wanna clarify that request when the time comes.
Okay.
Any other questions for us tonight? Okay. Anyone have any other comments on the, on the application?
So I'm assuming this, uh, the calculations and all this were reviewed already of the stormwater?
Yes.
It sounds like it was.
Uh, some preliminary calculations were prepared by the applicant, and uh, I believe there were also some prepared prior to this admission, like, uh, in in twenty twenty-two, I wasn't involved in the project at that time.
Okay.
But yes, they have been reviewed, and and this letter is in accordance with with the.
I I had a question. I know this has been for the planning commission previously. It looks like the shapes of these lots are contrary to the ordinance, at least that's what's mentioned in the letter.
Right.
Has there been any prior public comments about the shapes of the lot and how that might um, affect the experience of of other township residents?
So I don't, I don't recall that being discussed.
There was discussion around it, it's the lot in the back and having that long driveway.
Like a, the flag lot, yeah, the interior lot, yeah.
And.
Can you reduce this a little bit so we can see the overall site?
But just having access to the the basher and everything, but I I don't, I mean, there wasn't anything that said not to do it.
Okay. And, yeah, and part of, part of the shape is is a result of the shape of the.
It took your original, you started off with a triangle, and you were trying to make it into three pieces.
Right.
Probably three triangles.
Yeah.
It works, I mean, when you look at it, it looks kind of one big land, so.
Yeah.
I think they're, they're trying to get uh, subdivided so they can sell two sections of it. I think that was the best fit, and there were some other reasons for that, like the easements, I believe, there were some easements in the back, they had the, where they could put the house.
So someone might have a very long driveway, but that's not really a problem for other people.
Right.
Okay.
And lot two, the driveway will be significant enough for a fire truck to get back there, correct?
Um, I will have to check on the width.
The width was the issue.
Yeah, the width.
Yes, um, uh, do you know offhand what the width should be? Okay, I'll, I'll check.
It's something that, the fire truck is much larger than a.
If you think so, yeah.
Review the plans, and he said it's okay.
Yeah, I think we got the okay.
We got the letter, so.
He said there was nothing, no issues.
Yeah, no comment, right, something like that.
Okay.
But when we're talking about the driveways, I've noticed that the uh, lot on the bottom, it's a driveway is not really aligned with the driveway that's on opposite side, where I see that you try to align the driveways on the lot to with the bottom um, property driveway, which is nice. But then als- then uh, it kinda, because the lot on the bottom doesn't align, it seems if you're driving on this road, you're kinda ducking a lot of driveways there, um, because that second bottom driveway is not aligned with the opposite one.
Um. Yeah, I mean.
You talking about this, this lot, this one here?
Yes, yeah, that one is not aligned with the one on the bottom, and we can see it, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, um.
I think it's like that throughout that road, that Hickory Hill, that's.
They're all different driveways.
They're, yeah, they're all, all those driveways are kind of random.
Random.
Yeah, they don't align. It's not like streets where you're creating an intersection.
Yeah.
They just all hit Hickory Road where where they need to.
I think, well, there's one intersection over by the uh, by where you go to Lehigh, and then the other next intersection would be the uh, three seventy-eight.
Yeah, right.
Everything else is random in between.
Yeah. That should be fine.
I I think they were making the most effort to uh, capture uh, all the new impervious surface to get it in the basin, since the basin's directly downhill of that.
Okay, that's, that's all the comments, uh, I guess, you know, we won't make any action, take any action on this tonight, and we'll wait till you get those changes made, and see you next time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 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 I guess, yeah, we'll move to table, motion to table.
I motion to table.
Second?
I motion to table.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Molly, they don't have any time issues, correct?
Um, they're currently good till April second, so we think you won't be coming back, so maybe I'll reach out just to get them up in ninety days.
Okay, yeah, I think we're past the, being able to submit for the next meeting, right? So then that puts us into April, so yeah.
You don't have any objection to uh, signing, you know, providing us with a waiver or an extension of time?
No.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four meeting. Do, uh, any comments on the minutes?
It's a long time ago.
Yes, it is. If, no, without any comments, can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I have motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay. So the next item is member term date change, correction for discussion.
Um, there was an issue that we brought up. Normally, the planning commission cannot have three members that need their term renewed in a year, and we've been running that way for a little while. So in order to change that, um, Veronica has agreed to have her term just changed to twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, so we'll have one member fix, uh, be removed or their term expires one year, and then two, two, and two every year after that.
Very good.
So I just need an affirmation that that's okay to pass on to council.
In a, in a, in a motion, or just, okay, all right, uh, can I have a a motion to approve the change in terms, uh, for Veronica Gress?
I'll listen.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, no public is here, so there will be no public comment, and I got a motion for adjournment.
Go to adjourn.
Everybody seconded, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want me to hit stop, Molly? Molly, should I hit stop on the panel? Should I hit stop? Oh. All right, see everybody in two months, I guess, huh?
I.
Yeah.